Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our city council meeting for August 26, 2025. I want to welcome those who are joining us here on the dais. First of all, I'd like to introduce our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, also our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. I want to also acknowledge our city staff, who is with us today in the audience, working real hard on behalf of the citizens, and acknowledge my colleagues here on city council, who are with us here tonight. And with that, we will have an invocation by Pastor Jeff Whitaker with Transformation Church. I would ask us all to please stand. And following the invocation, will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather here tonight, we seek your presence and guidance in our discussions. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and the responsibility that comes with it. We sincerely ask that you grant us wisdom as we make decisions that impact the lives of our residents. Help us to listen to one another with respect and understanding, fostering collaboration and unity amongst us. May our actions reflect our commitment to the well-being of Portsmouth and all its citizens. We ask for your blessings on our deliberations and on the city we love. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor Whitaker. Madam Clerk, would you please call the -- well, excuse me. I had it lapse there for a minute. I would ask all my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of the city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the minutes of a call meeting on July 22, 2025, and a regular meeting on July 22, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the city council rules for our speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the space growth decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And moving on with our agenda. Moving on with our agenda, we have come to the item of public hearing, item 25-226, Public Hearing on Honorary Street Sign Designation, Use Permit, and Res zoning Applications. Item A, HSND-2502. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering on this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of L. Drake Stith for an honorary sign, street name designation, to designate a portion of Portsmouth Boulevard between Frederick Boulevard and Deep Creek Boulevard as Horace Savage Jr. Way in recognition of Horace Savage Jr. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval. The actual resolution reads, "A resolution designating an honorary street name of Horace Savage Jr. Way for the portion of Portsmouth Boulevard located between Frederick Boulevard and Deep Creek Boulevard."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, City Manager Stephen Carter. My name is L. Drake Stith, and I'm the president of IC Norcom Alumni Association and a proud member of the Truξton Civic League's Hall of Fame. It is truly an honor to stand before you this evening to request an honorary street sign in recognition of a man and a family whose contributions have greatly enriched the Truξton community and the city of Portsmouth. The Tucker Savage family, a legacy of leadership in Truξton. One of the most influential families in Truξton's history is the Tucker Savage family. As one of the original 42 homeowners in Truξton, they lived in the first block of Key Road and helped shape the foundation of our community. Their contributions remain an enduring part of our heritage. Mr. Thomas Tucker, founder of the Truξton Masonic Lodge, number 199 in the Truξton Ever Ready chapter of the Eastern Stars, a major leader in the Truξton Civic League, a religious and fraternal affairs and the operations of the Truξton School when the community recruited and paid its own teachers prior to annexation into Portsmouth. Mr. Tucker served on the Truξton Town Council and was recognized as the unofficial mayor of Truξton. Thomasine Savage Womack, first black person to earn a master's degree in psychiatric nursing from Richmond Professional Institute, Virginia Commonwealth University. Bessie Tucker Savage, homemaker, teacher at the Truξton School, and later at IC Norcom High School. Mr. Horace Savage Sr., founder of the Eureka Social and Literary Club, which remains active today, active in the Truξton Garden Club, the Coral Group, and Players Guild. Horace Savage Jr., Coach Savage, grew up at 58 Key Road, later Gospel Road, now 2313 Portsmouth Boulevard. Attended Truξton School and IC Norcom High School. He served three years in the U.S. Army and 37 years in the Portsmouth Public School system. He taught 19 years at IC Norcom High School, where he coached a track team to a state championship in 1959 and the football team to a district championship and state runner-up in 1967. He's the first president of the Portsmouth Education Association, the first black assistant principal at Harry Hunt Jr. High, later assigned to Wildrow Wilson High, named Assistant Superintendent for General Services in 1976, and Assistant Superintendent for Staff Development and Personnel in 1980. His community contributions: He led the campaign to refurbish and enlarge the Effingham Street YMCA, the first black president of the Torch Club and the Kiwanis Club, president of Places and Programs for Children, first black leader of the Portsmouth Community Concert Association, board member of the Salvation Army, lifetime member of the historic Truξton Civic League, elected into the Truξton Civic League Hall of Fame in 2008, host and spokesperson of annual banquets preserving and sharing the Truξton history for over 20 years. In 2025, the Truξton community proudly established the Horace Savage Jr. Family Ancestral Award in his honor at 100 years of age. Coach Savage remains a living testament and one whom which we have immense pride. It gives me great pride to stand before you today to ask you to name a portion of Portsmouth Boulevard, a place where his family residence still resides in recognition of all that he and the Tucker Savage family have given to Truξton and to Portsmouth. And I'm happy to have with me today his daughter Alexis Savage, Ms. Adonia Howard from the IC Norcom Alumni Association, Mr. Louis Taylor from the Norcom Hall of Fame, and Dr. Campbell, who's from St. James Church. And I hope that you will honor this request. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stith. Are there any questions for Ms. Stith, for my colleagues? Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
And thank you for the presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, come forward and speak on this public hearing item. You're not required to have signed up. So if you want to come and speak on this specific item, come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you. The next public hearing item, item B, UP-25-01. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting the request of Coastal Virginia developers for a use permit for the development of 17 townhouse units on approximately 1.7 acres located at 1200 Hodges Ferry Road in the urban residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for institutional public uses. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2501, to Coastal Virginia developers to construct a total of not to exceed 17 townhouse units on approximately 1.7 acres of the property having an address of 1200 Hodges Ferry Road."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes. I mean, 10 minutes, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Members of city council, city staff, my name is Grady Palmer. My business address is 222 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Coastal Virginia developers, Mr. Bob Arnett, Mr. Matt Howard, Mr. Billy Mann. Portsmouth-based company here tonight requesting your approval. I want to thank the staff, first of all, for the recommendation for approval, and I thank the planning commission for their recommendation for approval. This is a proposal to construct 17 townhouse units. It's conditional use permit. The underlying zoning allows residential to be developed in this zoning district, but townhouses require a conditional use permit. So that's what we're requesting tonight is the approval of that conditional use permit to construct 17 for-sale townhouse units. And I noted on your agenda, interesting that you're considering an adoption of an ordinance from the Home Investment Partnership Program. And I think that's a great program that Portsmouth utilizes, and this would be a candidate for additional investment opportunities for people looking to acquire homes and getting down payment assistance. So that's an interesting note that I just wanted to note for the record. You've got several -- Portsmouth has several policies that have been adopted to encourage what we're proposing. And what we're proposing falls under affordable housing, but it really is that missing middle that we really struggle with as an industry. As an industry, I think we do a good job at building low-income housing. We do a good job of building housing that costs a lot, but we don't do a good job of delivering missing-middle-type, middle-income-type units. And this is what this would provide. So these units would sell for between $290,000 and $325,000. Would be approximately 1,700 square feet. So it would serve those middle-income buyers in Portsmouth. So as we've said, the property is currently zoned residential. We think of at least approximately eight single-family homes could be built with no public review, no public discussion. So we think that the layout would be here. You can see this is a portion of Central Baptist Church, some excess land that the church has. What we're proposing is traditional neighborhood design. So the townhouse-style units would be pushed up onto the street, kind of creating a streetscape, a nice streetscape. And you can kind of see there, all the parking would be to the rear of the unit so it would protect the streetscape along Logan, along Hodges Ferry Road. So we've delivered, we believe, a very high-quality project that proffers that are for your consideration tonight, has a lot of high-end design elements that would control into perpetuity. So it would be managed by an HOA. So any future homeowners, you know, all those protections and design criteria would carry on. So we did a few studies on this. So normally with conditional use permits, you don't do traffic impact analysis or fiscal impact analysis. But we wanted to do that to assure the public that converting, taking this property, you know, from the church, which is an untaxed property, you know, would be a positive for the city of Portsmouth for tax revenue. But also, we understand that, you know, Hodges Ferry Road is a cut-through, you know, from 264 to Western Branch and Portsmouth Boulevard. So we know traffic is a concern out there. And so we did it. We had our traffic engineer look at it. This proposal would generate, on average, seven vehicles in the morning rush hour and nine vehicles, average vehicles, during the evening rush. So we know that it's not going to contribute to a lot of traffic. There's a lot more traffic than that that happens in the morning and the evening rush. But one of the things that we're looking to do and want the public to know, we've agreed to apply to the city for permission to install speed tables throughout the corridor on, I believe it's Leonard, I think is what we've discussed. And so, you know, on another effort, we're trying to work with the community, understanding that there are concerns out there, and that would be paid for by private dollars, installed by the developers if approved. So that is something, in addition to what is in your package, that we are working towards. And so with that, I want to ask for your approval tonight. I'm here for any questions, as well as the development team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And could you please come back? Because I'm getting ready to ask my colleagues if they have any questions. So that way, you won't have to make those additional steps. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
In the previous hearings that we had on this in, I believe it was zoning, we talked about a couple of issues with this. And one is that that is a cut-through area and that your residents are going to have to put up with some high-speed traffic, not of your fault, but of the design of the streets here. And the speed bumps are the solution you came up with? Because we had talked about another solution, the city putting up a stop sign for a different direction or a one-way in there. Was the speed bumps the solution that seemed the best?
Well, it's a solution that we can contribute, that we felt like we could contribute to the community. So, I mean, we -- there may have been some discussions about a stop sign. Or certainly, whatever the city would see as a value add, we're certainly willing to do that. If it's not speed tables, if it's a stop sign, we're certainly willing to do that.
Oh, no, I just wanted to know, to make your residents happy, not as a condition on your residents, but the city to facilitate the happiness of your residents. I think there are some traffic problems that we should address with this cut-through area that we have there. And I think, I don't know if Mr. Carter, you're aware of that? Okay, we had it in the preliminary hearings, and I can't remember which corner it was, but there was a corner there where people do a high-speed cut-through in this neighborhood there that we wanted to change the traffic pattern there somewhat. And I don't know that a solution has been generated yet. But I think it would facilitate this development for us to take our part in the responsibility as a city. The second question that I had in the preliminary hearings was the taxes. And y'all were going to address the back taxes because it was a church property that had not paid taxes. In some instances, there is a back tax to be paid. Has that legal was going to address that too with us?
So the pastor is here tonight. He's able to speak to that. But whatever taxes are owed, those taxes will be paid. So if the city assesses a rollback on the church--
I want to make sure the city did its job to tell you whether those were--
Yeah, I have not heard that there will be a rollback assessed, but certainly if there is, it will be paid.
Okay. I'd like to ask if the city has investigated that. Is there a rollback on that or not? I don't know. But we asked at the preliminary hearing, did that be presented tonight?
Sir, that's not a condition that's a part of this permit. So that's really not really relevant to this application.
We can discuss it later. Thank you, sir.
We can discuss it later. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to Councilman Dodson's point around traffic, I also sat in the planning commission discussion. There were several neighbors that got up and spoke to existing traffic issues that have nothing to do with this construction. So I want to compliment you for listening to the concerns of the neighbors, for taking action on your own to address those concerns. The traffic study that you did that wasn't required, and now the offer to install speed tables, I think will not only mitigate the really nominal traffic change that your development imposes, but will address traffic conditions such as they are right now, even before you all even put a shovel to the ground. So thank you.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilman Hugel addressed what I was going to speak of. I think to describe that as a high-speed cut-through is a little hyperbole. That cut-through there has been for a number of years, and the developer on his own is going to help address some of the problems. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Attorney Palmer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you are not required to have signed up to speak. However, if you do come and speak, I need your name, address, and you will have five minutes.
City council, thank you. My name is Steve Graeme. I'm the pastor at Central Baptist Church. And I just wanted to let you know that I've been in talks with Bob Arnett and his team for a while now. Our whole leadership team has. And as a church, we unanimously approved this sale. We're excited to go forward. We're thankful for the opportunity to see middle-income homes right next door to us, that we have the opportunity to minister to them. And also, the income that it'll provide for us to do some updates for our building and also with the forward plans to plant another church. So that's our plans behind the building, or the sale of the land. And anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, you can come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor and city councilman, my name is Benjamin Keeling. I live at 215 Mayflower Road, which is on the left side of the chart there. I'm coming forward, just as a resident in the area, to indicate that Mr. Arnett has gone out of his way to meet with residents. I was at the planning commission meeting here. He met with us right afterwards. And then we set up another meeting to deal with and talk about concerns that the residents had. And Mr. Arnett has done, has said that he would definitely deal with the issues, help to resolve those issues, and even to go further and consider speed bumps on Mayflower. I'm on that part of it where it's a straightaway. And so, yeah, there's a lot of speeding that does go on. So it's a real concern for my wife and I in that regard. But just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Downhouse. I live at 114 Gillis Road. I didn't plan prepared tonight, but I saw the illustration. And the illustration shows on the top right corner, there's a site triangle. And it has two other drives and then one on the backside that's got trees beside it. And on section 40.2304 landscaping and screening, citation three, landscape buffers, it says, "Eight site triangles. No fence, berm, wall, or other landscaping features may exceed 36 inches above grade within any site triangle for streets, alleys, or driveways." So anywhere that's a driveway, you can't have anything within a 30-foot issue of that because that's what city code is. That's what a site triangle is, is 30 feet. And additionally, since this is a multifamily dwelling, okay, then the code for that says it has to have sidewalks on the frontage of the properties. And I don't see the sidewalks on there. So, but like I said, I didn't come prepared with that or because I could give you the citation. I just saw it up there, and I was like, okay, it's nice, but it's missing some things that need to be in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our next item, item C, Z-25-01. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting the proposal to amend and reenact City Code Chapter 40.2, zoning ordinance, sections 40.2-217, use-specific standards, and 40.2-533 use permits in Division 5 of Article 5 Enforcement for the purpose of modifying, one, the regulations applicable to event space, banquet halls, entertainment establishments, and similar uses, and, two, the enforcement authority of the zoning administrator. Related changes to additional sections of the zoning ordinance may be discussed at a public hearing. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. And I don't believe that we don't have an applicant for this one. Do we have an applicant?
The city is the applicant.
The city is the applicant, correct. So we do have registered speakers for this item. Our first registered speaker is Mr. David House. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I'm David House. I live in the Simon and Still District of Portsmouth. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. So in the ordinance, I like to talk about the off-street parking. I've highlighted in the section here. So it says, "If off-street parking, if the off-street parking requirement for an establishment under this ordinance is to be satisfied by using off-street parking areas not located on the same parcel as the use, then a shared parking agreement or lease agreement must be submitted for review and approval as to form by the city attorney." And it also talks about agreement and approval as to form by the city attorney." And it also talks about agreement with the specific location, number of spaces, duration of use, and the hours of availability. And it also talks about off-street parking areas must be located within 800 feet walking distance of the proposed entertainment establishment. So, my question is, so does off-street parking identify, the application identify the location of the parking? So, the new code does not address any on-street parking issues that will occur in the residential districts. Can adjacent businesses change, businesses charge you a fee to utilize off-street parking? Does event parking require a use permit for valet, VIP, or general parking? If you go to the back section, I've highlighted a property on Chawan Drive, this leases restaurant and lounge. So, I've given you some pictorials during the day, and in the bottom corner, it says, "This building is used at night for pay parking." If you go to the next sheet, I show you the area that's a vacant lot, and then I show you the drive, and I show you across the street, there's a shopping center that's called Chawan Shops. And there's a resident there at 120 Chawan Drive that's called 4U22 Love, and it's an event center. So, we have this address. If you scroll to the next page, it shows the parking that's at the restaurant, and it shows that 109 and 105 Chawan Drive have pay parking that they're charging residents to pay. They're on a business property, and then if you go to the next page, it shows you where they have cones out, and it shows that parking is $5, and it's VIP is $10. And it shows the pay parking at the establishment at 109 and 107, and it shows, then across the street, it shows $5 parking in the Chawan Shops. So, the owner, the resident at 120 Chawan Drive rents a parking, I mean, rents a building in that property. So, he has commandeered that parking lot, and is charging people $5 to park in the lot that y'all have already established with use permits and parking regulations. So, my question is, is it legal for them to charge parking, VIP parking, on property that's business property? So, in your pictorial on the second page, you've allocated private clubs under the table use. So, in the private clubs, you've allowed one parking place for 200 square feet of use. So, you've added private clubs under the Section 40.2-301, which is under institutions. The current code requires one parking place for 500 square feet of feasible and usable space for civic, social, fraternal clubs, and lodges. So, what you've done, so for example, if you had 1,500 square feet, at 500 square feet, you're allowed 50 parking places. So, you've reduced that footprint to 200, and now they're allowed 75 parking places. So, if you look under the Parking Standards Code for Institutions, it says for civic, social, and fraternal clubs and lodges, 500 square feet. But the new code is authorizing private clubs to have 200 square feet, which, like I said, is doubling their parking places, which means double the footprint of vehicles and everything else in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Russell, if you can address some of these things, there was a lot to unpack there, but...
Do you want a copy of this?
That would help. You can have this copy if you come forth.
No. You can address it from the next. Sir, you can have a seat.
Okay.
Take your time to digest that a minute before you...
Okay. Good evening, everyone. In listening to Mr. House's comments, let me focus on two areas. So, let's start with the parking standard that's proposed in the ordinance. And so, under the use-specific standards that are proposed, paragraph, it's double A, and I'm going to read it verbatim. It states, "If the off-street parking requirement for the establishment under this zoning ordinance is to be satisfied by utilizing off-street parking areas not located on the same parcel as the use, then a shared parking agreement or lease agreement must be submitted for review and approval as to form by the city attorney. The shared parking agreement must specify the location, the number of spaces, duration of use, and hours of availability." And so, that evaluation would take place as a part of vetting the review process. So, that would occur through the conditional use permit process. And so, I can share with you, when Mr. House started speaking of a property on Chawan, that I'm not familiar with, but I'll take him for his word, that it's an event space, and it is likely one that is already permitted and in existence. And then he shared information about parking, and VIP, and valet parking opportunities. Well, what he's describing is exactly what this provision in the draft ordinance is trying to address, and providing parameters and standards around that. And so, if a potential vendor for a new event space or entertainment venue came forward, and they did not have sufficient parking based on the standard and the capacity of the existing structure, then the language provides an opportunity for that applicant to meet their parking requirement by demonstrating that they have a formal agreement with an adjacent property owner. And what that does is it creates an opportunity to address parking that's not on-street parking, that spills over into other neighboring residential areas or neighboring commercial properties without permission. So, that's the rationale for it. Mr. House also spoke about the parking standard that's outlined. It's in Table 40.2, Minimum Off-Street Parking Standards. And he talks about, he spoke to the fact that we're doubling that standard. And so, now, I fully understand Mr. Carter's rationale for wanting an in-depth conversation about these proposed provisions. Yesterday, a whole day before, we were asking the council to act on this. And so, help me if I miss something. But the private club language is new. It is brand-new. And we are attempting in the draft ordinance to differentiate private clubs from civic, social, and fraternal clubs. And because it is a new, for Portsmouth, in the Portsmouth ordinance, it is, it's a new use. We tied it to a definition, and we included a parking standard for that specific use. And so, his language suggests that, you know, we're departing from our existing ordinance requirements for parking. No, we're not. We're adding a standard for private clubs as we are adding a new use. So, I hope I got it all. Did I get it all? Those are, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Carroll. Okay. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Russell...
Hold on, Mr. Carroll. Hold on, please. I think the councilman has a question for Dr. Russell. My apologies.
Yeah, thank you. And so, this is either to the manager or Dr. Russell. So, acknowledging that the specifics that Mr. House provided is for a currently-approved business, and therefore, our new rules, this business presumably is grandfathered from those rules. But the fact remains that there's paid parking going on. And so, whether it's the new rules or the old rules, I think the question still remains, does our code allow that? Does the person who is charging for parking need a business license, or...
Hold the thought. So, Madam Attorney has asked for the floor, so I'm going to give her the floor at this time.
I'm so sorry.
Because I think we're confusing. We're getting into, we're getting into a line of questioning that's not relevant to this particular ordinance that we're dealing with today in its entirety. So, I'm going to let the attorney deal with that question.
I do not want to stifle council's questions with respect to what's been presented by the citizen, but I do need to remind you that we're limited to what's relevant before council for this public hearing. There has been an issue brought up on a property that is not before council, on an issue that is not before council. And so, I would ask that we would table that discussion, take note of the concern posed, and research that appropriately, and do a report back. But we cannot engage in that with this public hearing because it is not relevant to the issue before.
Thank you. That's exactly where I was going. We have an issue. I'm not looking for an answer, just a commitment that we got some homework to do on this other issue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Dr. Russell, before you sit down, I know we have several speakers coming to speak on this ordinance. One thing that kind of stuck out, and you just touched on it, is that private clubs, the new definition in this ordinance, and there is a separate designation for entertainment establishments. Correct, right?
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that, just based on the example of how we're defining private club versus entertainment establishments, that that might be something we want to reiterate, as we've been doing this discussion yesterday and today, about the distinction between the two. So, I just wanted to throw that out there in case that might be helpful as we continue the discussions for the next speakers that might come along, the difference between private club, entertainment establishments. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor, you have the floor.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Thomas, the Planning Commission public hearing for the proposed ordinance amendments, commissioners were concerned about the impact of the proposed ordinance language to fraternal, social, and civic organizations. More specifically, that these organizations often have activities that are very similar to the event centers, and they generate revenue for these organizations that are civic-minded and nonprofit in nature. And the commissioners, and I believe also the council, agreed that we did not want to make the restrictions so burdensome for that use that it took away a lot of their livelihood. And so, staff discussed how, what were the opportunities to resolve that as a concern, and it is to separate out what is a private club from a private, from a civic, social, or fraternal organization. And so, I'd like to read them verbatim. I think that might be helpful. So, an entertainment establishment, you want me to read that one, too? Is that what you're asking?
I just wanted to know if you could quickly kind of summarize the difference, because, you know, we use, we interchange the word "club" and "entertainment establishment," and in the example provided, based on what we discussed...
Excuse me, ma'am. Hold on. Before we engage, because we've had an in-depth discussion about these items yesterday, before we reengage in that whole discussion again, I need the manager to make clear, all of the questions really need to be directed to the manager, but the manager needs to approach the staff about any question or concern. I think it's important to follow this process because it continues, as we continue to engage, it will not only extend the time that we're dealing with this issue, but it introduces more confusion. So, Mr. Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you help with that?
Thank you.
Yes. Dr. Russell, thank you for your input on this, and I really appreciate your willingness and your ability to answer the questions that were posed to you. What I'd like to actually do though, and we had a really robust discussion on this last night, what we're really trying to do is give the citizens an opportunity to engage in a way that they didn't have an opportunity to last night. However, the process should not reengage that full conversation again last night. All of the information about what is actually there, the definitions that she's about to read, or was about to read, I'm going to ask you not to read those, because that information is published. If there's a question about that we need to answer, absolutely. But let's not just read definitions back into the record, okay?
Can I follow up with that, then, sir?
Yes.
Loud and clear hear you. Where I was going was with the prior speaker's comments and the examples used, the example provided, I thought, felt more into the entertainment establishment, and I know we were talking code around private club parking. So, because of that comment, I thought there was maybe some overlap or confusion about our distinction between private club and entertainment establishments. I don't want to rehash the long conversations we had yesterday, but I did want to point out clarity in the example that you provided to council, even with the examples that those addresses, that based on the new definitions, that that's not really a private club, and that was the example used for the parking situation. But I don't want to hold up more time. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Madam Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to sort of jump in and maybe create some clarity for the audience here. The entertainment establishment is the definition. It always has been. It is the, it is the thing that we've been providing use permits for all along. The only new distinction is a private club, is a new defining entity, and that was made public to you all in the documentation you have that came out with the agenda. And it is, it is something separate and apart from civic and social fraternal clubs and lodges. So, I think that's the distinction between the three. That's the quickest way to summarize it, and I think that gets the distinction that there are three separate entities, all of which have separate and distinct use standards allowable under the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and Dr. Russell. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, sir, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Steve Carroll, and I am a resident of Portsmouth. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I can't be for or against this. I'm assuming, first of all, this is a preamble to three other agenda items to follow. And I'm also hopefully assuming that this is supposed to make things better, because it is very obvious that we have a problem in the city with these types of establishments. Or we wouldn't be here tonight, and we wouldn't be addressing this, would we? My concern, first of all, what is the penalty for not adhering to the improvements, to these standards? Where are the teeth? Because without teeth, quite frankly, this agenda item is not worth the paper it's printed on. And that's a problem. Now, I came here with several different things on my mind, and they were all intertwined and related to this one agenda item. And that is the city's ability and commitment to enforce code. And it goes far and wide. It's not just entertainment establishments, or whatever we want to call them, as a citizen, as a husband, as a civic league president, as a citizen of Portsmouth. Noise, I don't care where it's coming from, if you want to make a distinction without a difference, whether it's an entertainment venue or a club, I don't care. Rowdy behavior, illegal activity, violence, that's what concerns me. And that's what ought to be the focus here. This should be an improvement over a situation that we have a problem with, and I'd like to hear more about that. And I'm going to address some things later on, non-agenda, that come back to this. These things, these types of venues attract problems to the city. We've got enough problems without asking for them, and we need to get a handle on them, and we need to get a tight rein on it, and we need to do it now. So, I can't say I'm for or against it. I'm for it if it has teeth, if there is clear commitment from this city that we have the ability to enforce and the commitment to enforce. Otherwise, we're spinning our wheels here. That's what I want to hear. Where are the teeth? Where is the enforcement? What is the penalty for not adhering to this? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Dodson, you have the floor.
Mr. Carroll, that has been a topic that we've had in every discussion that we've had, is we have a problem with enforcement, and our city manager is fully aware of it, and we talk about it almost every, every meeting. And we're looking for solutions. And thank you, thank you, thank you for emphasizing the need for it.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Carroll asked where the teeth is in these changes, and I'm going to call upon our city attorney. I think she's in a better position to explain what the enforcement aspect is.
Madam Attorney?
Yes.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I didn't hear what your statement was, but I can tell you that in our new zoning, there is a section that talks about the ability for the city to revoke, to address the revocation of the use permit previously provided.
of the use permit previously provided. It also provides for a new avenue where the zoning administrator may revoke the occupancy license for those who do not have a use permit. That is a more swift and aggressive ability that we did not have before. Moreover, in our legislative packet that's coming up and being worked through now, because January is around the corner, we will be pursuing the ability for use permits to expire, thereby requiring everyone who receives access to the use permit process to be subject to any changes in the future. Those things, in combination with what we already have on the books being enforced, will provide all the adequate levels of prosecution, accountability, and safety that we're looking for. And it would be similarly situated like we have in other cities in the Tidewater area.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. And our next speaker is Mr. Daniel House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Daniel House, I live in the city of Portsmouth. So, this, I've read the information on it, I listened to all the dialogue, there's issues with this that are different from any other entertainment activities, that you're allowing off-site, off-premises parking to another facility. But the problem with that is that you've got people traveling 800 feet or more, or within 800 feet, to another facility, and we will bring it up in this case, so what happens if that facility charges for parking? Okay? Now, that is a use permit for valet that would have to be a use permit for that property. So you can't say that, oh, we're going to get an agreement, that's a form that has to be reviewed by the city attorney, to say we have a permit in place. The way that the current code is being written is that you have to peruse the property of the side properties to make sure there's no trash and stuff after the event. But there's nothing about the other property to make sure that people that transfers or carry drinks, don't say it's not going to happen, because it is, or whatever, down to the other place, and they're going to drop them in the parking lot. Okay? Or what about security? You require security at the event, but you don't have any security or cameras at the off-site parking? Or security walking down to the other place? Nothing whatsoever. And I understand that you say zoning is going to be in charge of this, let me tell you, I've got stuff that's been before zoning for almost a year in their box under C Click Fix, and they've done nothing, nothing. They won't respond to my responses in there, they go on. So don't, I mean, I understand that you're putting the whole onus on the zoning administrator, but he's one person, okay? And you don't have, he doesn't have enough staff to facilitate what he's doing.
Sir, sir, excuse me.
Yes.
This use permit is specific to the item's ordinance, this is not about the zoning administrator. I need, sir, sir, hold the thought, I need you to stay on topic.
Well, it's right here in your, and number two, it says, hold on, that...
Sir, sir, this is not a debate, I'm going to...
No, no, I'm just saying, it says, "The enforcement authority of the zoning administrator." So that was, that's in your dialogue.
But you're entering in other discussions, I'm not going to go back and forth.
Okay, so you know what, I shouldn't have brought back what I personally hadn't been involved with it.
That is correct, that is not relevant to the discussion.
Okay, and I apologize for that. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
But, I'm just saying, you don't have the staff, okay? What happens if there's an over occupancy because you brought in shuttles? You've got nobody here at the city at night to enforce that, okay? Because you called the police department, and they're inundated. You can't, you can't call the farm marshal, because they're inundated, helping with the police. So you've got nobody to enforce it at night, other than somebody calling the next day and it's like, "Did you see what happened?" And they're like, "Yep, but we couldn't do nothing about it." Okay? And then, well, you got to wait till we see it, that's what, unless the city can see it themselves, they can't act on it.
Sir, I hear your position.
Okay.
Much of what you're saying is certainly appropriate, perhaps, but it's hypothetical, and we are not dealing in hypotheticals in this discussion.
Okay.
What we are dealing in is what deals with the ordinance, and what is, sir, what is proposed in the ordinance. It's not a debating situation. I need you to stay on topic, and once you're done, we'll ask you to take your seat.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. But like I said, the issues that I brought is, you don't have any, anything in there to peruse the other properties that's going to allow for the off-site parking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Coleman Young. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Coleman Young, I'm at 603 Denwyd Street. Want to give my, I mean, recognition to the mayor, the vice mayor, and the members of council. I come before you, and I realize that there's a problem here, you're trying to balance safety, safety with having a conductive atmosphere of business, especially since listening to the work session last night, and the promise of a big, successful future for the city. You know, unfortunately, we have, what happened, in my opinion, is you had a bad actor in the city, and, you know, one solution to this, as well as other suggestions or recommendations that have come up, is just the fact of a patrol of a police, if there's anticipation of some problem, a police could always go into a facility to make their presence known, that would put a damper on any possible thoughts or actions that they may take. Okay, there are two issues with, with the ordinance that I want to bring to attention. One is the not allowing promoters or any outside group to be able to conduct business. My thinking is, look, what you're doing, you're putting the onus and the burden on the restaurant owner. He's got the responsibility of hiring staff, producing food, having an atmosphere going in. Now, if he wants to bring in additional business, you're putting the onus on him to have a social media, to do the publicity, to bring a group in. Now, why not have a promoter? You know, a person that'll say, "It's a disc jockey, I can put the word out, I'm going to be at such and such a place at such and such a time and come in." Now, and the other's outside group, why not have, you know, there are situations, you have an outside promoter come in, and they're able to bring people in, you're talking about a business. Now, this could easily be handled, or be controlled by additional staff or security. And the second point is the authority given to the zoning administrator. Now, I'm not saying that there isn't a need for teeth in this legislation, I mean, this ordinance, it needs to be that. What I'm concerned about is the authority or the power that's given to the zoning administrator. I talked to Mr. Brown today, and asked him, now, if a situation comes, if the conditions are, if a restaurant or a business has a disorderly conduct, fighting, or alcohol issue, and they notice it given to them, that administrator has the authority to shut them down right then and there. Now, what if this incident happened one day after the zoning board met? That's 30 days before he's going to be able to go in. Now, when you go in and cease and desist, or shut down, you know, what happens to that owner of that business? You know, if he's not able to go to his employees, say, "I hereby have the authority to cease to desist paying you." I don't have the authority to be able to not pay the vendors, or not to pay the utilities, or not pay the mortgage. What my thought is, is once they give a notice, allow him to continue to operate, he's got his day of reckoning, a day if he has to go before a hearing, and the facts to be reviewed. You know, if you have a speeding ticket, the police officer doesn't arrest you, doesn't compound the car, you know, and take your driver's license. If I'm arrested for a crime, I'm not put in jail, I mean, I am detained, but I have an opportunity to bail. What you're doing, you're restricting the owners of these businesses. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Vincent Majors. Mr. Majors, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council, how's everybody doing? My name's Vincent Majors. I'm a resident of the New Afton Greens area in Portsmouth, and I know I only have five minutes, it's just that me and one of my neighbors seen this on the news, and so we rushed up here, so forgive me if I ain't fully prepared. But what I'm here to say to you all today is, is, all right, we stay in a neighborhood of 200 new homes, three to half million dollars, and we live in fear. 200 new homes, we are terrified, just Thursday night. Now, y'all got these ordinances that you're setting up to allow these clubs to close at 12:30 and 1:00 and all of these times, but just Thursday night, 1 o'clock, 20 shots got fired behind our houses, six hitting homes. So my neighbor's homes have been shot up, the house right across the street from me. Two shots in each bedroom, one shot in the kitchen, right at the sink. Fences shot up. I'm just here today saying, we need help. I don't need to hear about how they trying to make it better for their parking, and all of these things, and which club is to blame. I know that they were leaving that club that night, which is directly behind our homes. These clubs were not here before these homes was built. I've been living in the 7:00, 5:00 all my life. Two of the five clubs have recently opened within a year. One is the only one that's been here at least five years, and then the other two are less than three. And now, we got here where a sixth club wants to open up in the same shopping center. Now, whether y'all calling them entertainment centers and clubs and all of that, I don't care what you call them. Me having to be told that my child goes to sleep when the club closes? Our children sleeping at school because the club gets to stay open to 12 o'clock. My child can't go to sleep because he's singing the song that he hearing at the club. I stay right at 800 yards away from that club. 800 yards, not a quarter mile, right at a half mile. I'm listening to club music like it's in my living room. And I don't know exactly what needs to occur, or who needs to be talked to, but I do know that I voted for you all. For situations like this, when I'm in trouble, I'm coming to you all now. This, how are you going to make it work for them to park better and all of these things? The timing, noise is noise. What om it is? If I'm hearing boom, 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 and it's not at a om level, what, come on, the 2:00? And then these places, they call themselves entertainment spots, but then at 12, they switch over to clubs? I know they got that lingo that you're saying, everything is new here. My question is, Norfolk, Virginia Beach don't have this problem. Why? Because Norfolk and Virginia Beach got rid of this riffraff. Why are we accepting this riffraff now? And I, and I hate saying this part, because I don't want people to think bad about us, but yes, Portsmouth, the most dangerous city in Virginia? Come on now. And then we going to accept somebody else's riffraff? Now, me and my, me and my 200 neighbors, we invested in the city of Portsmouth. We don't feel like the city of Portsmouth is investing in us. I don't want to leave here tonight hearing, "We're going to do something about it." Me and my kids can't sleep tonight. We've been shot up. Oh, it takes two incidents, or what? We got to get shot up twice before something get done about it? No. No, now, I don't know if I'm using the correct lingo or the correct words, but that has to change, and immediately. Not, "We going to come together and talk about it, and next week, we going to get on to something." We want to go to sleep tonight. I'm pretty sure if they were shooting around your houses, something get done tonight. That's all I'm asking. To live in, not to live in fear, come on, y'all. We can't sleep. Our bedrooms are being shot up. What if that man's child was standing at that kitchen? Huh? I know it's 1:30, really, in the time of the night. And it's sad, I swear, because it's like a carnival going on. I would love to have your numbers, to call you in my bedroom at 1:00, and let you sing the song from the club that's going on, quarter mile across the street. Now, mind you, we have another one.
Sir, sir, I appreciate everything you're saying, your time is up. And you can, and you're welcome to remain if you want, if you want some more dialogue, you're welcome to remain after the meeting.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, truly, really, because come election time, y'all got an hour for them, and we can stand out front, talk all day long.
Very good.
Right now, I need to do something now, not less than five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Gregory McCoy. Mr. McCoy, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Majors, could you see me after the meeting, please?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. My name is Gregory McCoy, also live in Afton Green. My neighbor's house was a house shot up, and it was right, and it went through my fence, but didn't hit my home. I heard something about a grandfather, so I'm wondering if those establishments are open now, are they grandfathered in, that they won't be in the zoning thing that's going up now, because they already grandfathered? Because like Ben said, we need something done now. It's horrible, we were scared, I had to get on the floor, wait, go and check on my son in his room. Then, like you said, my backyard is right at the door to the club, so you can jump my fence, and it's probably where y'all sitting at now. So I hear this noise, constant. So the 12 o'clock zoning is fine for me, if they want to, after 12, I love it, we can get some rest, maybe we can put up with it till 12, but like you said, it's a restaurant during the day, and then at night, it's wide open. It's wide open. And, like you said, I paid all this money for my home, I moved from Norfolk over here, and I was skeptical, I said, "Nah, it's going to be fine." But now, one of my neighbors, they already got their house up for sale, it only been last Thursday. And I just don't think, as you know, like you said, nobody's invested in us, we come over here to look for something new, and we scared to death. So, and I can say, I just hope they not grandfathering in, where this zoning thing won't apply to them, but we need to do something. And like you said, we just seen this on the news, and we jumped up and came down here, because we've been talking about it in the neighborhood for the last all weekend. So, if something can be done, we really, we really would appreciate it. We have, we have a problem. We have a problem, and I don't know what to do, and we looking for y'all for help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Can you remain for a minute, Mr. McCoy? He may have a question.
Yeah, so my question is to the city attorney, ma'am, could you speak to what portions are grandfathered, and the fact that enforcement is not grandfathered? Can I talk to that, please?
The enforcement, thank you for coming and speaking, both the residents of Afton Neighborhood and the George Washington Community. The provisions in the zoning code that are new that you see do not apply to people who are legally operating right now. But what you've described, but let me finish. What you described may be an illegal action, because restaurants are restaurants, and entertainment establishments should not turn into, restaurants shouldn't turn to entertainment establishments after hours. And so if you are doing, if you have a problem like that, and you... And so if you are doing, if you have a, a problem like that and you report that, that then goes to an enforcement division where we can move and enforce it pursuant to the zoning that's already on the books. So if they, if you're legally operating, you're fine. All rules stay the same. But if you illegally operate, then we have the leeway to enforce those things that are already in the zoning code in accordance with that. Now, remember earlier, I talked about how we have this legislation that we're seeking where we'll be able to time out some of these use permits. That will allow any new regulations to become enforced in the future. But you, you're not concerned about the future, you're concerned about today, and I appreciate that. And so what we can do is if you would share with our representative who will come up to you shortly, your name and information, we'll follow up with you to get the information that you have, because there are things on the books right now that we can do in the courts with our planning department, with our zoning administrator that may be able to get you some relief.
All right, thank you. Thank y'all.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for coming to speak. Madam Attorney, also wanted to add to the what's grandfathered and not grandfathered. If you can clarify, it's the two or more incidences also considered grandfathered, I mean, sorry, enforced, whether you are grandfathered or not?
Let's be very clear. Violence is not tolerated in Portsmouth. If you have violence outside of your facility, whether you were here 10 minutes ago or 20 years ago, we can enjoin you from operating because of safety, health, and wellness, period. We can do that today. We could do that yesterday, but we gotta hear from you, and we gotta have witnesses. So if you see something, say something and be available so when we do act, we have the people to say what happened. That's the only way this gets closed down. Now, what I will say is that now the code allows for the zoning administrator to act like I described earlier, as well as the use permit to be revoked by council, and we've changed some timings on that to allow for it to be more swiftly done. But I want to be very clear, the zoning code has not changed in the sense that we can act immediately on anything that affects the health and safety of our community.
And to add to that, that is why we're sitting here tonight, because safety is priority one. This council has determined that from day one, and we will adhere to that with everything that we have, so you just need to understand that. But we can't do our job and keep our community safe without the help of the community, and you guys have stepped forward. We'll, we'll address your concerns. That's why I said, please, don't leave here tonight until we've had a conversation. Is that fair? Thank you very much. Once again.
Just to follow up with what Councilman Thomas was saying, there are provisions in here that talk about two or more incidents or one or more incidents. Those are specifically just enumerated, but we can act, if the act is, is an act that affects safe health and safety, we can move more quickly. But this just allows the public to see that there are very specific times and terms upon which council can revoke a, a use permit or a restaurant could have the zoning administrator act. So it, it really just codifies what's already been, been available to you under the zoning code. I hope that's clear.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Attorney. And once again, this is a public hearing. If you want to come and speak on this item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, well, ma'am, if you would come forward, please. State your name and address.
Hello, I am Nicole Adams. I am a homeowner at 35 Fraley Place, which is also in the Crotock neighborhood. There were just a couple of things that I wanted to call attention to that were in the entertainment establishment section. Also, with some of the comments that have been said, I also find issue with the no outside promoters or third-party events, like the one gentleman mentioned. We want to promote people coming to Portsmouth to spend money, to have entertainment, to create positive memories, and that feels really discriminatory to, like freelancers. I know party promoters and things like that, that is a viable, honorable thing, job that brings entertainment, joy, healing to our community. So I really wanted to point out how I didn't find that particular thing to be equitable for the type of business that we would like to attract in Portsmouth. The other thing is that the casino is exempt from some of these things, and I was one of the people who was not in favor of the casinos. We have giant promotion for the casino just by driving down the street, and we're saying that no outside promoters or party promotions. I think of this as a diversity issue. I know we've had several speakers. I also, like I said, I'm a homeowner in Crotock. I know some of the establishments, they have fabulous colossal shrimp at the corner, if I do say so myself. But I represent a population who has been born in Portsmouth, loves to have entertainment in Portsmouth, bought a home in Portsmouth, and I want to represent the under 50 crowd that we hope to keep in our city, that we want to keep entertained in our city as well. The security plans also include police coordination, which I just wanted to state for the public, that all security, security plans include ID check, weapons checks, security staff, and police coordination. I'm not too much of a fan of police coordination, but that is just myself. I want to highlight that just for the citizens. And again, with the casino being exempted from some of these things, it seems that we are driving business toward the casino and away from small businesses, and I really want to caution against that because we, we're clearly not going to have a second casino, but we do hope to have more and more small businesses. If you look around, I was in Old Town before this meeting, dead. We hope to have more, I hope to see more entertainment venues and less barriers to them. I think when we talk about, we have enough of these problems and riffraff, yeah, I think that we're talking about black people, and I hope that we see the potential in young black people enjoying entertainment in our city.
And I want to speak to, to that question or that, that comment. Let me be clear, and I'm not speaking on behalf of my colleagues on council, but I'm speaking as the mayor of the city of Portsmouth. Safety is a non-negotiable. And we're not, we're not singling out anyone, any race, any people, any person, any gender. Safety is a non-negotiable. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else who wants to come and speak on this item? You can come forward and speak. You state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Vilma Brown. My address is 5142 Councilway, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23703. First of all, I want to, first, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. First of all, I want to start off to say, I'm very offended when they said Portsmouth is the most dangerous city in the world. That's not true. I love Portsmouth. I represent Portsmouth. And also, I wanted to say that I love going to the Bar Nai. I'm 57 years old. Me and my friends, I think it's a great establishment, and it's not the people from the club, it's not the club, it's the game, game related. Gangs is everywhere. So when they say that they not, they not safe, you're not safe anywhere. That's how I feel. You could be in the airport, you could be in church, everywhere. And another thing I'm gonna say, I love going, you know, Bar Nai. I'm tired of going to Virginia Beach, riding 40 minutes to Virginia Beach just for me and my girlfriends, 55 and up, just to have, you know, a nice time, nice dinner, and listen to great music. And I just think we need something in Portsmouth. Instead of us turning Portsmouth down, let's build Portsmouth back up. And that's just how I feel. And so I feel like, yes, let's go and have something in Portsmouth. And I think Bar Nai is a family-oriented place. Me and my family go there all the time to eat. They got great food, great entertainment. And I just say, hey, let's just give Portsmouth a chance, instead of always talking about Portsmouth. And I voted for each and every one of y'all. So that's all I'm saying. Give it a chance.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come and speak on this item, you have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, sorry, thank you. Before I voted, I did have a discussion. Is that, can I still have this discussion point really quick? We're voting on this ordinance change. One thing that was just mentioned, I mentioned last night during our discussion, was item related to entertainment establishments and the outside promoter, third-party events language in there. I wanted to see if we could get that language, if it was with the consent of council, pulled out or addressed, because based on some of the examples I gave last night, we would limit a, a restaurant's ability to host third-party events, and we know some examples that I provided last night, based on a certain high school's homecoming events, other events that are held at restaurants. It would basically, since this restaurant would be grandfathered in, it would limit any new restaurants from being able to also serve that type of business. So before we vote, I'm not sure if we already did that, I just wanted to add that comment, reiterating what I already stated last night as well. So that was my only comment in the discussion.
We already have a motion, we already have a motion.
And I pushed the wrong button.
And we already have a motion and a second on the table. So we need to just vote at this time. We have a motion and a second on the table. Call for the vote? Please vote electronically.
The item is adopted, 5 to...
Thank you. Let's move on to the unfinished business item, item 25-137. And these are unfinished business items, and only the speakers who are registered will speak on these items. They were previously under, under a public hearing, so item B, 25-137B. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting a use permit, UP 2503, to R. Brown to operate an entertainment establishment on a portion of a parcel having an address of 2012 Victory Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. And I think we have one speaker for that, Mr. Steve Carroll.
My name and my address has not changed. Let me make it clear that I do not know any of these applicants personally, and that goes for the next three items that are on the agenda. I'm opposed to this use permit largely because of the points that I've made earlier, but I will add a few extra, and I am building to something, and I'll go ahead and forego my time for the next two items. I'll say what I need to say for right now, for this 25-137. There is a member on council right now who attended a civic meeting downtown a few years ago that I attended. I don't know what you call it. I don't know if it was a restaurant, an entertainment establishment, who knows what you call it. I do remember this, that people in the room in the business next door, six feet away, you could not hear what they were saying because the noise from that other establishment next door was so bad. Now, the place we were in was a restaurant. It was so bad that the pots and pans were rattling on the wall. Ladies on the dais, forgive me for what I'm, I'm gonna try to be tactful here. I stuck around and watched the clientele after we were done with our business. I saw three individuals go in, and this is not this particular business, but I'm opposed to it for these reasons. There was not enough cotton to be found to diaper a gnat. This is a problem, members of council. This is what these types of businesses, this one, any other one like it, are attracting to our city. I can't say it any other way. But going back to the noise, I, I can't describe how loud it was. It's, I, I can't make it any clearer than what it was, and it's, it does a disservice to adjacent businesses. You just heard somebody who's 800 yards away and could still not go to sleep? This is not what Portsmouth should be about, and it certainly wasn't what Portsmouth was about. Now, I've lived here all of my life. I can remember the old days of Harry's Light Horse Tavern. A lot of people will remember it if you were in the Navy. Okay? Those things went by the wayside for a reason, did they not? They lost their interest, but they were also detrimental to the image of this city. And I'll say again, and I'm, and again, I'm building to something when I go non-agenda. We simply lack the resources to properly monitor this business and any other like it. And when the mud hits the fan, it's too late. It's already happened. By the way, this is very close to an incident we had just not too long ago where we had a parking lot spinout incident. I'll say no more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members on this item, item 25-137, item B, we are in need of a motion and a
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-1.
Item 25-159, item B. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we are considering for this item.
A resolution granting a use permit, UP 2504, to B. Ashby to operate an event space banquet hall at 6031 High Street West.
Madam Clerk, thank you, and we do have a registered speaker for this item.
He decided he didn't want to speak.
You're gonna forego your speaking on this item, sir, or wait till non-agenda? Okay, just want to make sure we're clear. With that being said, then, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Seeing none, this, well, we need, we need...
I move to adopt, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any motion to deny?
Yes.
Is there any additional comments?
No, that wasn't a motion. No. Move to adopt.
Okay. Move to adopt. Okay, I got a lot of conversations. So the motion is, the motion to adopt? And we have a second. Any additional discussion on the item?
Yes.
So we have an item for discussion. Is it, Councilman Hugel, sir, do you have a, have a, have a comment? You have the floor.
So the current conditions in the use permit include Monday through Sunday, closing hours of 2:00 a.m. for an event... hours of 2:00 a.m. for an event center that's going to conduct wedding receptions and birthday parties. And so, I don't know if the applicant is here, but I'm wondering if the applicant would reconsider adjusting the closing hours during the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Sunday night to midnight. We'll leave the work, the closing hours to 2:00 a.m. on Friday night and Saturday night. But, but my proposal would be to make that adjustment in the conditions, and I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant.
Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address, and you will have the floor.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak, council. My name's Belinda Ashby. I live at twenty-four thirty-three Bugle Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia. So the question I had put in for requesting to be able to stay open later, I just need that upon request of my clients because I do have different cultures that I service, and some start later in the evening than, than other cultures. My venue is in a shopping center that is not around any, so I don't, the gentleman who spoke, I don't have any of those problems with sounds, with residents, I don't have any violence because I have two other venues in Chesapeake, in Western Branch. I am... People who come to my establishment because we have different events such as retirement parties, baby showers, graduations, birthdays, corporate events, I don't have those problems of people just coming in for a party and, you know, having a good time, and they plan their stuff out, they spend some money on the decor. We're, I would like to say, a luxury venue. We have over sixteen chandeliers. My, my, it's important to me that the place always looks like a luxury event. No one standing out front. I requested, it, I requested that they allow me to use my back door because it said that they needed it to be used for emergency only. But in my plans, in my architectural design, I had put a back area designated for smoking so that...
Excuse me, ma'am. I, I, I don't mean to be, to interrupt you, but I don't want to rehash everything else. I only have one very straightforward question. Are you willing to reconsider adjusting your closing hours to midnight on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights, leaving the closing hours at 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights? That's a yes or a no? If it's going to kill your business on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights to not be open until 2:00 a.m., then just tell me that, and we'll proceed to vote.
Well, it doesn't kill my business, but like I said, I do have some cultures that come in that might want a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I have someone looking right now to have a wedding for three days, and if I say, well, hey, no, because you can't go past twelve, I mean, they might not want it, but if they request it, then it might shoot me down for having events with different cultures. So I don't have a problem closing at twelve, but if I have a request which might not happen too often because I don't want to be open to, I would like to be able to entertain my client's wishes, whatever day it might be.
So I'm listening carefully for a yes or a no. Yes, you're agreeing to change the hours, or no, you need 2:00 a.m. for all seven nights.
I'm not sure how to answer that correctly.
Okay.
Because 2:00 a.m. is not something I need.
Okay, well, 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 I think in the interest of time, I think that, that, if it's not a definite yes you are, then it's, it's a no. So we're fine with that, but we need to move the discussion forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none, please?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I can't, some of these I can't see. Okay. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm familiar with this location, and as she stated previously, there's nothing around her but a very quiet shopping center. A restaurant and a pizza place are really all that operates at night where she is. And when we were considering this ordinance, we decided that location, like in a neighborhood, we were going to say really needs to close down at twelve, but those that were in public locations would be okay until 2:00 a.m. And my opinion on this one is that this location meets the criteria that we were discussing for a 2:00 a.m. venue. And my vote would be to keep it at 2:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we've had our discussion, we have a motion and a second. Please vote electronically.
I'm sorry. This item is adopted five-two.
Our next item, item twenty-five dash one nine-five, item B. And madam clerk, would you please read the resolution?
A resolution granting a use permit, UP twenty-five dash oh-five, to C. Hogan's to operate an entertainment establishment at eighteen oh-five Hodges Ferry Road.
We do not have any speakers for this item, so council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to deny. Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second. The motion to deny was Councilman Hugel, the second, I think, was Councilman Tillage.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion to deny. Any additional discussion on the, on that motion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, Councilman Tillage, you have?
Dotson.
Okay. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Again, when we discussed this ordinance, we've discussed the location specifics to it, and I wanted to reiterate to everybody, this was a owner who specifically stated that he would be very willing to stay open till only 12 o'clock, if I remember correctly, for, for this venue, for this neighborhood. It's not an ideal location for an event, but I don't know how we would, I know that it's a parking, gets out of hand, and if, there must be a legal agreement, I think we talked about, with the next-door owner, there would be no other events in the other parking lot either during the hours of operation in there. So I'm not happy that it's next to a residential neighborhood, but it does meet the correct criteria that we established.
We have a motion to deny and a second. We have had discussion. Please vote electronically.
This item is denied by a vote of six-one.
That concludes our items for our unfinished business. We are now on to items for city manager's report. Item twenty-five dash two-two-seven, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting home investment partnership program income in the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-two-eight, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Virginia 911 Services Board and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Grants Fund for the purpose, excuse me, purchase of equipment to enhance 911 services.
Thank you, madam clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-five dash two-two-nine, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of two million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said sum in the FY twenty-twenty-six Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to fund the Portsmouth two thousand twenty-six Safer Communities Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-five dash two-three-zero, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance appropriating one point two million dollars from the fund balance of the General Fund to the FY twenty-twenty-six General Fund Budget and authorizing the provision of said funds to the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the Lexington Senior Apartments Project.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
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 Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Next item, item twenty-five dash two-three-one, and madam clerk, would you read, please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-seven cent from an opiate settlement and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes and defined by the Virginia Opiate Fund and Settlement Allocation MOU.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Council members, item twenty-five dash two-three-two, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance for this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of two hundred sixty dollars from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to support clients.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-three-three, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting Marcus Alert Program funding in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for the planning and implementation of the Marcus Alert System.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-five dash two-three-four, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering under this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from the Portsmouth Chapter of the National Drifters, Inc., and appropriating said funds to the FY twenty-twenty-six Social Services Fund for use by DSS to support the food pantry.
Thank you. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-three-five, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional local staff and operations funding in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars from the Virginia Comp, from the Commonwealth of Virginia and appropriating said funds in the FY twenty-twenty-six Social Services Fund for the purpose of paying a one-time bonus to eligible Portsmouth Department of Social Services employees.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-three-six, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional four E. Foster Care funding in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Social Services Fund for use by DSS to pay eligible foster care costs.
Thank you, madam clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-three-seven, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of twenty-seven hundred dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Initiative Program.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-three-eight, and madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting kinship support funds in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-six Social Services Fund to assist with expenses related to supporting kinship resource parents.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Thank you, madam clerk. That concludes our city manager's items, and now we move to new business. Item twenty-five dash two-three-nine, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugel, do we have any boards and commissions to report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Thank you, sir. Our next item, item twenty-five dash two-four-zero, item submitted by council members, item A, and madam clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item, item A?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a one-year extension of use permit, UP twenty-three oh-five, to construct a townhouse development having not more than fifty-two units at eleven oh-seven and ten twenty-one High Street.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Item B, madam clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for item B?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a one-year extension of use permit, UP twenty-one oh-three, to construct and operate a multifamily dwelling development with not exceed two hundred eighty units at forty-three fifty-eight Greenwood Drive.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Are there any other items submitted by my colleagues on council at this time? Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Please tell me if I'm interjecting this at the right time, but I was able to attend the school board retreat, and I was impressed with the organization. One of the criticisms I had of the school board was their management of some of the resources, and they, to my delight, they have hired Dr. Pettis Patton to handle some of those items, and I expressed my desire to have more interaction with them, and if you didn't notice tonight, Clue Atkinson was in the audience from the school board tonight. We were very, I was very happy to see her here to have more interaction between us, and I'd like to see if we could get Dr. Patton on the agenda for a near-future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other items by my colleagues on council to be submitted? Well, I have a couple items. I want to thank all of the local organizations in our city who helped with our back-to-school efforts. There was Mercy Chefs, who had a block party, and they gave out significant backpacks over eight hundred and fed fifteen hundred of our citizens. In addition to that, we had organizations such as Big Homies, Give Back to the Block, in addition to Believe, Pray and Overcome, who had events during the August month, the month of August, who really helped our families and really supported them in the efforts to be ready and prepared to go back to school. So, on behalf of a grateful city, we want to thank them. And I also want, on a sad note, to let everyone know that we lost another one of our citizens who made a big difference in the city of Portsmouth, I believe a former first citizen, Mr. Robert T. Williams, and Bob Williams, as we all affectionately called Bob, was a very integral part of our city. I believe he served as the city manager. Most importantly, his organization was instrumental in building our courthouse, and I just want to say, on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I served with Bob on a number of organizations, and his wife Judy, of course, we want to offer the Williams family our condolences during this difficult time. Any other items submitted? I see Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say, you mentioned the back-to-school, so Portsmouth Public Schools, of course, started back-to-school. Myself and Councilwoman Bryant have children in the school system, so we've been navigating that, and I want to thank all the teachers, all the community members that came out to welcome the students, community. That's a strong point. It's not just the school system, it's all of us as a community working together to ensure that our students and our staff and our teachers all feel supported by the community. So, and also kudos, like the mayor said, to all the community organizations that participated in giving back to the schools. One thing I wanted to, well, two things I wanted to mention, but they all center around the topic of why we discussed the ordinance, of course, public safety, and I just want to thank everyone that came to speak tonight about this ordinance. This is just the first step, and we, this is like the first swipe at this, right, in terms of addressing our establishments and how we can better enforce and provide some boundaries around that. So, there was one piece of it that I would like to change, and hopefully, as we continue to, you know, put this out and implement the new ordinance, the use permit process, that we can somehow come back and make amendments when we see things working and not working. So, I wanted to put that out there. So, thank you. Continue to speak up, the two gentlemen right there, that, you know, we're hearing your voice and about some of the issues that you're facing, being in close proximity, those are the type of things we do need to hear, we do need to document, because it helps us better tailor and make sure we're doing the right things in enforcement. So, I hear you, and thank you for speaking up, and all the other gentlemen, and the people that spoke in terms of how we balance it with supporting businesses as well. So, please continue to speak. Our numbers, you mentioned getting our numbers, our numbers are listed on the website. We answer calls, we answer emails, and we want to hear from you, so I want to put that out there. Also, I want to have a follow-up item. I wanted to just put out there for our council and Mr. Carter. A few work sessions ago, Police Chief Jenkins, he gave us a presentation, he displayed the new dashboard, and part of that was also highlighting a neighborhood that was accounting for fifteen to twenty percent of police calls. And in that discussion, I wanted to know, I brought this up to Mr. Carter, if there's a way that we can also look at piloting a program or some sort of additional steps to focus on that highlighted neighborhood that Chief Jenkins presented during his work session. If you remember, it was a certain radius around, and I think it was Fayette, I can't remember the exact street names, but it was a few work sessions ago, I talked one-on-one with Mr. Carter about just some ideas of how we take the data that Chief Jenkins has provided us with real numbers about where fifteen to twenty percent of those calls are coming from to really put some impact. Councilwoman Bryant had one time, we have talked about some solutions that we could maybe implement in a pilot to really utilize some data and evidence-based methodologies to really reduce maybe our hotspots in crime, and I wanted to bring that back to the attention while we're still addressing overall public safety tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add to the comments tonight that the actions taken by council tonight to approve this new ordinance are centered entirely on public safety, and we recognize that there's a need for public safety across the city, and the new measures that we've put forth are intended to address that. And I want to thank our planning staff and our planning commission, the work of my colleagues here on councils. We spent a long time working on these measures with the goal of not letting safety continue to escalate, public safety continue to escalate in a negative way. Our goal is to enforce these measures, and with the approvals that we did for the new businesses tonight, we will have that opportunity to move forward with the new ordinance in a way that we can measure outcomes and we can revisit this conversation if need be. So, thank you to everyone who put time in, Dr. Russell, for walking us through this repeatedly. It's really a positive step forward, but one that we will, of course, continue to monitor. That said, and I'll piggyback off of my fellow councilwomen's comments tonight on public safety, and congratulations to our Police Department. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that anyone, we haven't met since they were Calea certified. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so congratulations to the Portsmouth Police Department for earning national accreditation. That is a very positive outcome. That was, I believe, thirty-ish years in the making. Our Police Department works very hard, and that is proven now with this national accreditation. So, thank you to our Portsmouth Police Department.
Thank you, ma'am. And also, I'm now going to turn the floor over to Madam City Attorney. She has some comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to also thank all the special needs teachers and teaching aides, support aides, and administrators in the Portsmouth Public School System. As a parent of a special needs student entering high school, I think we are just as nervous as our kids are, and I want to thank all the teachers who have been very supportive and administrators who've done that. I also want to welcome Principal Smedley, he's a new principal at Churchill High School. She's been a phenomenal addition to the Portsmouth Public Schools, and I wanted to also add that I too have a little one, although Councilwoman Thomas left me out of that shout-out with a student in the public school system, and I just want to give my kudos to them as well. Also, I did meet several special needs parents who had questions about IEPs, and I extended to them my email and phone number at the city. I'd be more than willing to help them navigate through that process, so do not hesitate in the city attorney's office and ask for me, and I'll help you through that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am, for sharing. Now, we're moving on to item twenty-five dash two forty-one, report on pending items. And Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. First of all, you have your report back that was presented to you in your package today. Councilwoman Brown stole my thunder.
It doesn't hurt to have it sounded off again, from the CEO's perspective.
Absolutely. Our Police Department has worked diligently toward this for several decades to make this happen. My Police Chief, every Police Chief that he's worked under has set this as a goal, but we finally reached that milestone, and I'm really, really proud of them for the work and the effort that they've put into this, because now, not only are we saying that we're doing what's right, but we have a nationally accredited organization that has looked at what we do and agree that what we're doing is right. So, that is really a special thing, when other people recognize the work that you've put in, and to achieve this after all that time, I think is amazing. So, I'm really proud of that group, and congratulations to Chief Jenkins and his team.
Here, here.
The final thing is, our fall version of Government 101 is getting ready to kick off. If you guys remember, we did this during the spring. We had a really great time interfacing with our citizens. This will start on September the fifteenth and go through November the seventeenth. Registration will start at twelve PM on September second. Let me repeat that. Registration starts at twelve PM on September second. It's only open to twenty-five people. The reason I'm repeating that is, the last time we opened that, it closed in about thirty minutes. So, if you're interested, September the second at twelve PM is when it will open. You'll be able to go to our website starting on tomorrow and find all the information about how to register and what the classes is all about. So, if you're interested, and I hope we do have the same kind of enthusiasm and turnout that we did before, Government, the fall version of Government 101 will kick off on September fifteenth, and the registration starts on September second at twelve PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Carter. Our next item, twenty-five dash two-four-two, non-agenda speakers, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and our first speaker for the evening will be Mr. David House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
City Manager, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, again, I'm David House. So, as you know, I'm an advocate about nuisance properties in the city of Portsmouth, and I'd like to bring one to your attention that's in West Norfolk, and I encourage you to go over there and look. So, the property is at thirty-three oh four Harding Avenue, and it butts up to thirty-six hundred Progress Avenue. So, I got a FOIA yesterday from the FOIA manager, and I got sixty pages of information that I did not give to you. This is additional information that I just got. So, this property has been in the city's radar for fourteen years. It was cited in two thousand and eleven. The property was sold, and then it had no action for over four years. It was cited in two thousand and fourteen December, and it was closed November two thousand and sixteen, so it was outstanding for twenty-three months. No final action was done, so it was outstanding. It was also cited by zoning in two thousand and fifteen November, stayed outstanding till January seventeen. They decided not to prosecute. So, in February twenty-one, nuisance was the violation, this permits an inspection, numerous inoperable vehicles as well as heavy equipment and and on around the property. Case was open, case was inspected, no finalization, so it's still open, no action taken. April twenty-two, owner renting campers in the yard, case was open, unfounded and closed. So, this property would later be cited on November and twenty-three by zoning for camper RV with human habitants living on the property, and again, this year in June thirteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Complaint unfounded. Nuisance and debris was all over the property, it was not addressed at all during the violation notice. May twenty-two, case was open, inspected and closed. Nowhere does it show anything about the nuisance property. Case is open, property was inspected by permits and inspection, but no action was taken to address the nuisance. Zoning, November twenty-three, they cited the property for goods, junk, material, merchandise, vehicles in the same place. They cited it for outdoor storage of vehicles, equipment and materials, including RV, camper RV with human habitants on the property. Case was open, property was cited, issued a notice of violation, summons requested on February twenty-four. Case is still open, and zoning just walked away from it. February this year, notice of violation for protective treatment, exterior walls, zoning, I mean, inspection, did not cite it for debris or violations or anything on the property. March this year, the property had multiple zoning matters, including industrial junk, yard, open storage, industrial equipment, and residential community, and parking on unapproved surface. A door hanger was placed at the entrance of the property. The door hanger was placed on a refrigerator sitting on the front porch. A c-click fix was generated in October twenty-four, and it was acknowledged in June of this year, June thirteenth, and that's when the city actually took action. So, now, we're to June this year. Zoning cited the property for unpermitted outside storage, construction yard, junkyard use, improper parking on the grass, and improved surfaces. Prohibited use of camper-type trailer for human habitation. So, you have pictures that are, the pictometry for the last six years showing the property. You also have pictures that have been taken in the last two to three months that show trash on the property, show all types of, all types of equipment on the property, and once again, it's a property that the city has had on the radar for fourteen years, and we're still here with it in a worse condition now than it was fourteen years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. House, for bringing those things to our attention. Last night, during our public work session, the subject came up of how to deal with blighted properties throughout our city, and there are processes in Virginia State Code that allows cities to deal with those in the form of blight taxes, in other words, increase in the property tax on ownership of these properties, and that's something I hope our city attorney, because there is a process, and obviously, anything in state code, it's not probably an easy process, but it's one that this council should explore. There are cities in Virginia that are using that to clean up their city, and I think we definitely should look into that. You know, some of these properties, we've been aware of for a number of years, and they're still with us, unfortunately, blighting their particular
Yes, sir.
...community, so.
Yes, sir. And this is a residential, this is, most of these properties that you see are residential properties. They're not commercial, they're not industrial, they're residential properties.
Well, the state code allows you, allows Well, the state code allows you, allows cities to deal with the residential piece as well as the commercial
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But like I said, these properties are strictly residential.
Right.
So the blight and whatever is even even greater in that situation.
Right. So Mayor, I would hope our city attorney will get back to council on what some of our options are and how we could proceed with some of those things.
Attorney, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you for that opportunity. I would tell you that I was a part of a, someone already beat me to the punch. Quite frankly, I do believe it's the city manager, or maybe it was the assessor. But that's already been batted around, and it's being discussed. And I think they're putting together a work group, and once they do that, we'll review it for form and legality and then get it back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. House, would you like for that to be one of the ones for September that we investigate for you?
Oh, I just, I just gave you the carrot, so now you want to take it from me?
No, I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
We'll have to see, because that now, now it's on, now it's on visibility for everybody in council to see.
All right.
And I mean, what's concerning is that it's been ongoing for 14 years.
Right.
The city has taken two actions, zoning actions, that lasted
We'll handle it.
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
I understand. I haven't decided that yet.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What's not being said is that there's a cooperative agreement between the parties here, and they're negotiating. So don't, don't be swayed by what's happening here. Yeah, exactly, priority.
Thank you. Thank you all for that dialogue. Our next speaker, Mr. Gary Bahena. Mr. Bahena, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager Carter, Judge Graham Williams. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be brief. I'm here about paddle battle and junior paddle battle. Paddle battle, Portsmouth Paddle Battle is kayak and SUP racing, paddleboard racing, which is next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but the Saturday after. Our races start at 10. The Coast Guard versus Navy Challenge Cup is at 11 o'clock. We received a call last week from the USS Bush, USS Bush, asking if there was a limit to the number of Navy entrants that they could put up against the Coast Guard. So the gauntlet has been thrown down, and we'll see how that goes. The bigger event for us, of course, is the junior paddle battle, which is, this is our first year of doing that. We've had a number of setbacks, lost our prime sponsor at the beginning of the event, the PRHA unfortunately lost the grant that they were using to help us get kids through the YMCA. What we've done is we have waived the requirement that kids coming in through the junior paddle battle have passed a swim class. That became impossible for the PRHA residents, the community residents there, and so we've waived that. Our insurance company waived it. And so we have a number of slots left. I'm here basically to plug that and to encourage people in our community to go to the Portsmouth Paddle Battle website. Just Google Portsmouth Paddle Battle, Google Portsmouth Free Kayak Lessons, or Junior Paddle Battle, and it'll take you to our site. Sign up your kids. We'd be happy to have them. It's Saturday, September 6th. Our first class starts at 12:30. It ends at 5 o'clock, and there are free kayak lessons for Portsmouth kids ages eight to 14, and now you don't have to know how to swim. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. Mr. Carroll, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Steve Carroll, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm going to bring, as I promised, my earlier comments full circle with what I'm going to cover tonight, or now. We have a cannabis problem in the city of Portsmouth. We have a drug problem in the city of Portsmouth. I heard no less than three members of council tonight say that safety was a priority for us. May, my wife and I came up here downtown to go see a movie, enjoy a dinner together. And walking up the sidewalk, we had to run the gauntlet of people smoking pot in public. Not just one, not just two, gangs of people. And that gave my wife a nice, warm, fuzzy July, we came down to watch the fireworks, as we have for years, down on the sidewalk off of Crawford Parkway. A young man and three younger women in tow sat down about six foot in front of us. The wind was coming from the east, so it was blowing their weed smoke right in our face. If the man was an adult, I'd be surprised, but I will say that he is an adult. One female might have been an adult. My wife and I discussed it on the way home. The other two were minors. He lit his joint up, and it was the size of a ballpoint pen, passed, took his drag, passed it on down the line to two minors. And please understand what I'm saying now. How many hundreds of kids were present there that night, members of council? Now, you're beginning to see the picture of my concern earlier about these establishments and the loose rein that has been on them. And this is not new. This is not a Green Onion just popped up. We brought this before council, year after year after year, about the problems with these establishments, entertainment, whatever you want to call them. The real problem, the underlying problem, is a lack of enforcement. And I do not lay this at the doorstep of our police department. I have a lot of sympathy for, for the police chief who has been handed a pick and a wheelbarrow and told to move a mountain. I lay it right here. And in fairness, I lay it to some of the people who come to this podium and defend this garbage. Let me read to you state code statute. I don't know the legal term for it. 4.1, 111 TAC 1108. No person shall consume marijuana or marijuana product or offer marijuana or a marijuana product to another, whether accepted or not, at or any other public place. Paraphrased, few other statutes. Public place includes sidewalks, fireworks displays, walking down Portsmouth sidewalks. You need to take crime seriously. When we say we're going to enforce safety, those are not idle words. Our police do what they can, and they're undermanned. And we need to do something about The entertainment problem is but part of it. But I think it's pretty naive to assume that weed is not part of the problem. Now, if anybody would like to argue about weed, I can do that. I'm prepared to do that on another night. I wish I could say more.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Daniel House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You have five minutes.
Good evening, council members. So we've talked about safety and the need for safety. What I'd like to bring to your attention today, I've already brought to your attention an email, but I didn't get any response from anybody. I've been to zoning with it, didn't get any response from zoning. So here I am. So basically, if, for whatever reason, a zoning permit's issued and it's incorrect, Virginia code says that if it's discovered, the zoning administrator promptly will seek to correct it. So 32-4 says, prior to erecting a fence or building, the property owner shall verify the street lines between the city and the lot on which the fence is about to be erected. And then I go in, I've gotten my email to all the city council members, and I got a picture. I got a picture of a property that shows a driveway with a six-foot fence and a car around it that doesn't have 50% visibility, and it's not four foot tall, it's three foot tall, it's four foot tall. But the city approved it, and they did a survey waiver, and it says, although the city has requested and recommended that I submit a survey to show the exact location of the proposed improvement, I elected not to submit a survey. Unfortunately, on this property, they didn't, they didn't give them the option, but they didn't make them submit a survey either. But I'm saying here that the survey violates Section 34 because, Section 30, or Section 32-4, because it says, prior to erecting a fence, you have to have a site survey. But yet here, the city has adopted through the zoning a survey waiver forms without a zoning compliance. You don't have an ordinance that allows that. So either you do have it or you don't have it. So then the next page is my correspondence to the city manager. And then the next page is the permits inspections notice, and I blocked out the owner's name because I didn't think that was fair to them. But, because the city had cited this before, I even brought it to their attention. But it says, basically, the fence is already erected, and it says, cease and desist with the fence installation and necessary permits that can be requested and reviewed. And then it also says that you have to obtain a zoning clearance through the zoning office. Well, they got a permit on 5/20/23, okay? But below it is a zoning compliance permit, which was not, which was not issued until this year, 5/20/23, two years later to the date. And that one says that, where the finished fence, four-foot fence with 50% visibility in the front and the perimeter. Well, this is a yard that has a corner lot, and it requires site visibility. So a property at 2 Rogers Place, we brought it to the city, and the city made them take the fence down. This one, they've allowed it to stay, even though the city's been aware of it three different times, twice that I've spoken with, with zoning on it. And, and the next one, it says on 40.218, which is the next page, it says, site visibility. Corner lots shall preserve areas necessary for corner visibility by limiting fence or heights to the maximum of three feet above grade. Not four foot, that the compliance said, but three foot. And it says, all other obstructions between three and 10 feet of the established grades. And that, that comes through the Department of Transportation, because the Department of Transportation has established that sightline is at three and a half feet, and that people in cars have to see in front of them to two feet below that. But they allow three feet based upon this and other things. But like I said, so we talked about site visibility. There's also what's called site distance visibility, which that is, when you're at an intersection, and if I turn to the left, 10 feet from the easement back has to be clear so I can see traffic at a certain miles per hour. And that distance increases by the speed limit on the road. So the higher, higher the speed limit, the more distance I have to be able to see to see that down there. And unfortunately, the city is not compliant with that at all. Okay? And I've started to address that in some issues to C Click Fix. But on this one property, you're setting a precedent if you allow them to have it. Okay? And I've already brought it to the city council through emails and to zoning through C Click Fix, and now I'll show you how it's relevant with the code, and it doesn't meet the code. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. House, for your passion. I apologize for not emailing you back.
Nope, it's all good.
I did read your email. I sent it to the city manager for, to look into the concerns that you addressed. I guess we'll count this as number two of five for September.
No.
Okay, then we'll just push it off to October. Your choice.
You're aware of it.
We are.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Coleman Young. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Coleman Young. I live on Denwoodie Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Vice Mayor, members of council. What I wanted, awfully sorry to hear about the passing of Mr. Williams. Matter of fact, I go all the way back to 1957, when I, at the time, I didn't know him, but he, he played football for UVA against Army.
He did.
What I wanted to mention was, I am very excited and inspired by seeing the work session last night, seeing what possibilities and opportunities are available for the city on the five parcels of land that will bring a lot of prosperity and energy to this city. I was very much inspired by you, Mr. Glover, your, your talk. You could tell, tell us coming from the heart that this, this city, that, and the question is, we're not going to think small anymore, we're going to think big, we're going to move forward. I've been observing the council for 50 years, and I think this is the first council with mayor and city manager that we can accomplish some great things. And I ended one, one aspect, and unfortunately the bad part, sometimes the politics, the wagon train will go, the dogs will bark, but the wagon train will keep moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Our last speaker for the evening is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to be the last speaker. Seems like every time. 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I've been trying to figure out how I can stop being the last speaker, but it's okay. I just wanted to do one thing real quick, and then I'll say this. I'm gonna pray for God to touch everybody in this city to come under one accord about different issues that we have in our city. Number one, I talked about the water bill, and I'm back, and I got the new water bill system, been approved and put in place, June the 23rd. It took me 35 years to get a new billing system. And I thank God for it. But it's still an issue. And when it start messing with my credibility of paying bills, I'm gonna keep on talking. I know Mr. Carter and Ms. Stokes requested for me to do certain things, but I noticed when I was doing it, that nobody would be in detail of my letter that I asked for to Mr. Carter. And I'm explaining what I mean by detail. I said, when you use this new billing system, please be detailed on what the people pay, when it's due, the billing period, and how much, and when they pay, when y'all post our payments. Well, that haven't happened yet. And what's going on, you hear over and over, me saying that I pay my bills in advance. If it's due on the 9th, I know I get it, and my husband makes sure that I take care of the bills, because all he do is stroke the check, and I come in and pay the bill. Sometimes when he give it to me, he might be going out of town. Sometimes when he give it to me, he might be going out of town, and he might forget. But all my bills that I pay in this city, utilities or whatever, is paid on time or before. We don't beg nobody for nothing. We do what we can, my son and I, to help others. But at the same time, we trust God for everything. And I want to say that God got his protection on me about many things in this city that y'all don't even know what I'm going through. But that water bill, I feel that when people make mistakes, because they use the computer. The computer don't program and set dates of what is due. The people do. So I need someone to take the time and address my issue and many other people's issues that been talking to me. It ain't just the poor or the low income. This billing system have been affecting some people in many ways that a lot of people don't know. I'm gonna use for an example. I talked about 5161 to the date of the due date, 77. I'll give you that for an example. Now, I'm being asked to give things, checks and whatnot, to show proof that I pay. Well, when we write a check to pay our bills in this city, I feel that every company should have a record of our check numbers and how much we pay. And I just wanted to say, when it's posted, all I do is come cross the street. I put cash in the bank, come cross the street, give them the check. It's no reason why my bills are not paid and be confusing. 5161, for an example, they not questioning that. But today I got some papers showing I'm questioning that I don't have the payment on this statement. All I ask, if you make a bill, make when in that bill, design, my son do designs, that's how I know what I'm talking about. If it ain't right, I ain't gonna let him put it out. And all I ask is the due date, the money amount, and the billing period that's crossed the old top. And so I'm gonna use, I don't know if y'all aware that I come to pay a bill if I can finish this, and they didn't even have.
Finish that train of thought, please.
They didn't even have a bill to print. I had to go downstairs and get a old bill that they told me they didn't no longer have the old bill. So it's a conflict with me saying stand my grounds, because how can I take an old bill?
Ms. Joseph.
Which I did.
Ms. Joseph.
I got you. I took that old bill and paid my bill. But when you still having billing system problem, I feel that the current bills should be paid, and the problem that you got questioned about between me and the water company and anybody else in this city should find documents out of their system.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Councilman Hugel.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday, Luanna.
I hope you ain't won no more loss on my, what I was gonna speak on.
Okay, thank you very much. But but that concludes our meeting for tonight. I want to wish everyone in the audience and and all of my colleagues a safe and enjoyable, I believe it's Labor Day. Enjoy your holiday, folks. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.